Extraordinary meeting. And I'd like to call for apologies. I haven't received one from councillor Buck, but I wonder if she's perhaps not here. I haven't seen her this morning. But I haven't received any apologies. Declarations of interest, there are none. And there isn't, this is an extraordinary meeting, so I don't think public participation, presentation of petitions is part of it? No? Is that a normal...
No.
No. And, but the purpose of the meeting today is the council submission on the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Bill. And I'll just, I'll move the, I'll move the recommendation. And do I have a second for, for the motion? Thank you. Phil, clear water. And just by way of introduction, so we've, we've obviously had a discussion about the, the detail of the bill. I think that we'll go straight to a debate on the bill. There are, I know that councillors have got specific issues that they'd like to focus on, so we'll do that during the course of the debate. I'll be a little bit more flexible than perhaps the, the three-minute rule would, would normally allow. And I just want to kick things off briefly, just to say that the, the purpose of today's meeting is to talk about the council's submission to the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Bill. And I think that, that the point that I want to make, and it's, it's kind of like the, the statement that's at the beginning of it, which is regeneration is not what governments do for cities, it's what cities do for themselves. And I've been giving the odd speech of late, the climate change one on Saturday, and a couple of others, where I've spoken about my favourite book, of course, which is If Mayor's Ruled the World. And the, and I know everyone laughs every time I say the title of that book because they're assuming that I want to rule the world. The, the purpose, the, what lies behind the book, though, is this understanding that, that lines between, I mean, the boundaries between countries are literally political lines on maps when it comes to things like disease, when it comes to things like global terrorism, when it comes to things like the global financial crisis. These cross boundaries because there is nothing to protect against them when you're talking about a political line drawn on a map. But when it comes to the resilience to defeat the spread of disease, to spread the defeat, you know, to spread, to, to defeat global, you know, financial crisis or global terrorism, it is at the city level that resilience can be built. And that's why I've always regarded building resilience as one of the most important things that we can be doing as a city, because we can prepare ourselves, we can ensure that people know how to interrelate with each other in order to protect themselves against a whole lot of things that can't be protected against from a, from a government letter, level. And that's why I say that regeneration is not what governments do for cities, it's what cities do for themselves. The, the government has introduced the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Bill in response to a call for a step change. For the next step in our recovery as a city, we move from the, the immediate response and recovery phase now to a, to a regeneration phase. We shift from central government control to local leadership and local decision-making, engaging the community in a process through an organisation here in Christchurch City called Regenerate Christchurch. We will soon be announcing the chair of Regenerate Christchurch, and I think that's going to give people a real sense of confidence that the Crown and the council are now working in unison. And I think that that's going to send a very powerful message to the people of Christchurch, a joint agency, genuinely joint. I know that the bill says that the minister appoints for a certain period and the mayor appoints for a certain period, but we've agreed between us that we'll jointly appoint the chair of Regenerate Christchurch. And I think that's going to send an incredibly powerful message. So the, what we're signing off on today is part one of the submission. I should make the point that we are going to make an oral submission. And when we get to item number four, actually, if we could add in there, nominates the mayor and the chief executive to speak to the submission on behalf of the council. I think that the, that when we, when we appear in front of the select committee, we will be able to expand on our submission, so I'm not too worried about expanding on it. But I know that some councillors want to raise some particular issues that they'd like us to draw to the select committee's attention, and I encourage people to raise those now in the debate. And I also believe that we'll have the opportunity to submit a supplementary submission at any stage, even after we've made our oral submission, in order to assist that process. They're on a pretty tight timeframe, they'll be down here, I think, on the 10th, 11th and 12th of December, so that's only at the end of next week. And so they're, they're going to be working quite hard to get that bill back into the House in time for it to take the place of the Canterbury Earthquake Recovery Act when it expires in late, late April. So I will hand it over to, to my colleagues to debate the bill and, and, I mean, not the bill, the submission, and then we, we'll take it from there. Phil.
Look, I, I actually think this is an excellent submission. It's, it's really full. I think it encompasses many of the ways and processes that, in fact, we, we would like to see, the whole Christchurch regeneration bill. And, and there is going to be scope for the mayor, and I'm pleased that we're going to do this, to, to speak to the bill and add, add some points to, or re, I guess reiterate and point out some examples of what's here. And one, one area that I think we need to make sure happens with this, in changing this bill, is that in fact, we find ways so that the regeneration plans aren't only owned by the government or even Regenerate Christchurch, but there's ways that local groups and local people and businesses can actually formulate their, their local plans too. And Sidnum is an example of where that needs to happen. And I think we're, we're aware that Enviro Waste right by the railway line has created a barrier for a lot of really necessary development for local businesses. And that's, there needs to be a way for local areas to also be supported so that they can regenerate too. So, and I, and I think that's where the, our submission refers really clearly, that there needs to be more recognition of the role of local government, and including aspects of consultation and engagement, and, and the, the bill does that. So I think it's, our submission is, is really good and strong. It points to the need for a strong collaborative approach with central government. And as, as the, I think in 702, what, what we need to happen from this bill and to happen for Christchurch now is to have some joined-up solutions, creating the best regeneration for our local communities too.
Andrew.
Yeah, I certainly support the submission that was presented to us today. And I'd like, in fact, to commend everyone that's been involved in getting us to this point, because I think what we've got is a, a very good and suitably strong submission. I'd, I'd note that the central city and New Brighton are specifically referenced in the bill, but that, that doesn't preclude the ability to add other areas. Phil already mentioned Sidnum, Littleton may be another example, and there are other areas where we've already done some master planning, which may or may not benefit from a regeneration plan. And, and the bill, as it's presented, allows for the opportunity for other areas to be added, both geographically or by activity, in fact, as well. But I believe what we've got here is a, a well-crafted submission. It makes the points that we need to make, makes them well, and it makes them suitably strongly. And at the same time, it makes constructive suggestions about changes we want to see so that the, the step change and the transition to local governance, the transition to local decision-making is achieved in the legislation. So I'm very supportive of what we've got in front of us today.
Ellie.
Thank you. I just, again, I think it's an excellent submission. I do wonder, though, whether we need to look at an amendment or include some information in this around an end point for the insurance and EQC claims. I think that regeneration is more than the physical, and the strong communities make for a really strong city and a healthy city, and many people need an end point. And I'll just draw your attention to the officer of the Auditor General's report on EQC on the CHIR program that was out yesterday, the report. And she actually notes that EQC says it's exerting every effort to ensure that the remaining settlements are completed as soon as reasonably practicable. However, EQC has not set a new end date for the programme. And the same could be said of insurance companies. And there has been some discussion about putting end dates for EQC and final settlement dates for insurance companies in legislation. That would be a, a long time coming. We have an opportunity, I think, to not only signal that, well, signal it strongly, actually, in, in this bill. People need to know where they stand, and there are still people out there that still don't even know whether they are overcap or undercap with EQC. And while we celebrate, and perhaps in the positions we're in, we more than, many others have an opportunity to celebrate a lot of the wins that are going on around the city, around the central city and around the suburbs, there are an awful lot of people who still don't have an opportunity to celebrate those wins and enjoy the journey that some of us are able to enjoy once we come out the other side of EQC and insurance. And I think we need to signal that. We need to advocate for our people, and I think at this point too, five years on, four years on, people just need to know that what they are being offered, what they are, what is being suggested to them, the next part of the journey, is fair. I've seen situations where people have been offered exactly what they've asked for and are entitled to, but are so tired and are so confused with that tiredness that they reject that. And I think that they need that truly independent support and advocacy in order to move on and resolve their cases. So I would strongly suggest that there be something in this bill that signals to both EQC and the insurance companies, we need an end date so that people can move on.
Yep. Paul, and then Glen.
Yeah, look, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the submission we're putting forward. There is a step change for the city, and it's really good to see that we're now going to be working in closer partnership with the government and, and really bringing our wishes to the fore, which is, I think, is really important. For me, there are, there are probably a few things in regeneration that I think may be missing and may just need to be brought to the, to the fore. Regeneration, for me, is like a piece of string. How long is it? It could go on for years. It could be 20 years before we see a full regeneration of some areas. And with that in mind, you know, we've got derelict buildings, and it's not just in central city, but it's actually across the city. We have other smaller business districts that actually have damaged buildings or empty sites. And it's the maintenance of those sites and making sure that we can encourage or enforce these land and property owners to ensure that they, they do keep their buildings that are derelict or not in use, or their empty sites that are not built on, in some form that actually it reflects well on the city. Because as I said, 20 years is a long time. If you've got an empty site that's blowing dust around the city or around one of the suburban areas, it's pretty unpleasant. If you've got tagging and damage done to your building, it's in the face of our public and our visitors. Again, it's not a good look on our city. So I think we need to take that leadership role, manage our own sites. A good start. And we do have some. But also then, we can actually look to others to do exactly the same, and having some sort of framework to allow that to happen, I'd be pretty happy with that.
Great. Yep. Yanni. Oh, sorry, you're not Yanni.
No, I'm Glen.
You're Glen.
Go ahead.
I, I said Yanni and looked straight at you.
I know. It's okay. I agree with one of the main themes coming through the submission, that the starting point needs to be a new thing rather than the old legislation. I also wonder at the use of regeneration and its association with step change. I've looked into the definition of regeneration. It could be a case of be careful what you wish for, because it seems to me that regeneration is far more profound than step change. It actually means a new generation, it means a transformation. And for communities such as New Brighton, they will be looking for hope, and they'll be, be looking for delivery. I suspect it's probably the last roll of the dice for them. We've had several master plans, as you know, over the years, and if this doesn't deliver from central and local government, then I'm not sure what space the communities will be in. I am concerned over communities surrounding residential red zone too, that consultation process over that part of the city could go on for two years. They are becoming increasingly restless, in my view, and I think we do need to put out some positive signs that things are happening. So right behind this, I see the residential red zone as offering the potential to unite the city, because I think it needs to be united after the quakes. And if we can ensure together with government that we will deliver, then I think it will offer people hope, which is one of the biggest things they need at the moment.
Pauline.
Thank you, and thank you for the preparation of this bill. I know there's a huge amount of work that's gone into this, it's a very challenging issue here. I'm just following on from councillor Livingstone there, the residential red zone, a submitter came into the LTP and actually called it the Jada Bar to the East was one word for it. But it's a jada bar to a lot of regeneration as well. It's affecting our land drainage recovery programme, it's affecting a lot of our plans for what we might do out there. We were at a meeting last night with Brooklyn's residents who are actually on the verge of deciding, it sounded like most of the 12 or so were going to stay there. So I'm wondering if we really need to not only try and focus on expediting what we decide to do with the red zone through Regeneration Christchurch, but also to make sure we are considering the people who are choosing to stay to live in those red zones. So that is what I'm just bringing out of the bill here at the moment. The rest of it is fantastic, it's a great opportunity here for a new beginning, a step change, and regeneration is such a lively word, let's hope that we can really get this cracking. So thank you.
Thank you. Tom.
Thank you. My colleagues have mentioned Sidnum and Littleton, but realistically, with regards to the wedding and other areas referred to by the council, I think that really covers and looks at the varieties of communities we have and the levels that they will need of support going to the future with regards to regeneration and the Regeneration Christchurch. And in particular, I'm really pleased with regards to when we're talking with them, looking at as a whole, when we've got land and government ownership, whether it be government or council or other entities, that we're really looking at, when these are disposed, of looking at how these could support whatever area, whether it's suburb, community or key activity areas, how these can support the regeneration of the city, but while still keeping in mind the legal, legal obligations that we are under. So I'm really, really pleased with this, and I think it's a really good move forward. And I also want to compliment council staff for the work that they've done on this document. Thank you.
David.
Thank you. I will support the motion, and I'd like to particularly acknowledge the authors of the submission for the great amount of work that they've done. For me, I, I have a great deal of satisfaction that the residential red zone and New Brighton are well focused in this submission. It's a good focus for Regenerate Christchurch, and these projects are great to see being implemented and getting RC operative. Personally, I've been through four master plans in the New Brighton area. I've been through a lot of rhetoric, a lot of talk, and for me, it's a time for positive action and to see some material change. So I'm, I'm very buoyed by what I'm seeing before me. I'd like to just acknowledge in the proposal 1.02, particularly where I think we have focused in the executive summary, the actual need and desire to do this work and what the purpose is. So I'm very pleased with what I see before me, and I will be voting for it.
Jamie.
Yeah, I think most of it's been, been said. But I, I did want to touch on just a, a couple of quick points, and that's, it is really clear, you know, this name regeneration, because I think it captures it so well, we are no longer in recovery anymore, we're past that, and this is a new phase, and it's an exciting phase. What we had is vehicles that, that connected together to achieve certain things, was possibly appropriate at the time of immediate earthquake recovery. I think we're all agreed that what we had is no longer the, the fit-for-purpose vehicle to achieve what we need to achieve now. Fundamentally, the only thing ever, the only thing any of us ever could have wanted as a result of the earthquake happening, whilst we couldn't know to the earthquake occurring, you've got to look at it and say, we need to be a better city, a more resilient city, a more vibrant city, a safer city than what we ever could have been had that earthquake not have happened. It's the only thing that makes this all worthwhile, it's the only thing that shows any respect to the people that were injured or lost their lives or went through the most hellish time imaginable. And I look around Christchurch right now, and I really believe that as we look at the end of 2015 and going into 2016, that we're on the path to do that. I really believe that we are going to be a better city as a result of that earthquake, whether it's just a cool piece of artwork that you see, the different people that you never really saw so much in old Christchurch, the new buildings that are up there, heck, even the cafes that you see. It really does give me hope that we're going to be in a better city than what Christchurch ever could have been had the earthquake hadn't have happened. And Regenerate Christchurch, I think, is a really great vehicle to be able to take this to the next step. It is a true partnership in every sense of the word of Crown and local government. We can't do it without the Crown, and the Crown can't do it without us. So I'm looking forward to this next phase, and I most certainly endorse the submission, and I congratulate everyone that worked on it. And I look forward to a, to a new, exciting time in Christchurch.
Jimmy.
Okay, thank you. I also support the list submission from the council, because this paragraph convinced me, especially the mayor, you, launched earlier, regeneration is not what government do for cities, it's what cities do themselves. Because I always thought, you know, this kind of the regeneration of the cities, not from the top down, but actually is the bottom up. And also the, also the regeneration, actually in high church in suburban area as the orientations, rather than in Wellington, you know, far away the place. Because we are much familiar with the, our issue, you know, how to rebuild, et cetera. Secondly, is this the kind of submission we cover is not only in the CBD only, actually supply the area, my fellow councillors particularly, New Brighton, Sidnum, or even some other region, the area. So there is a whole city to be rebuilt, to be regenerated. A third one is based on this submission we cover is the, rely to more, give the local, you know, more getting involved, more the kind of local can make the decision, et cetera. So back to the, 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 this the power to the local, I think this is very, very the, crucial. And only the one, you know, because why the, a moment this kind of regenerative plans, you know, not yet approved by the government. So regarding to the kind of the, what's the relations, for instance, like a relation between the DCL and relation to the Kwanqo, still kind of great area need to be identified. But I think if once the list of regenerative, the bill has been approved by the government, you know, need take times more clarify, if a council own land or Kwanqo the land, but how to the, you know, to identify more clearly, and also RC and the DC or, and the Kwanqo, how to, you know, work together for planning, for implementation, or how to facilitate it, needs, detail need to take time to be clarified. So by generally speaking, I support this submission. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yanni?
Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I think one of the things I just want to start off with is a quote from George Santayana, who- who quoted in The Life of Reason, 1905, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." And I think we need to learn from where we've come from to find a way forward. I think it's really important that we think about the context of why we're in the situation we're in today and what a better approach will be going forward. And it is with a bit of irony that the submission process last time was completely anti-democratic. Councillors were kept in the dark and this time we actually had a much more open and transparent process around formulating a submission, actually having time to prepare a considered submission to a select committee, which is certainly not the opportunity that we were given previously. And there's a bit of an irony because in that submission that I made in the personal capacity, I asked if we could actually appoint 50% of the community forum and that the government changed the word consultation with council to partnership. And isn't it an irony that actually what we're talking about here with the slight addition of one rep from Naotahu is a joint 50-50 appointment to the Regeneration Christchurch board? So it's interesting to reflect on the ideas that were put forward at the time, dismissed but actually where we've got to now.
You were ahead of your time.
I do think it's important to also reflect that the success of this bill and the success of the regeneration will be in its democracy. So we're moving from an autocracy to a democracy and what we don't want to do is create more bureaucracy that gets in the middle. And I think the success of people having confidence and certainty in this process and in these boards that will be established through here and the powers that will be conferred, are actually that they feel that they're involved and engaged in the decisions that are being made. And it's with that, I raise the issue of the residents in the central city, the residents who live within the four abs and who actually have been subject to pretty awkward and confusing planning over the last five years. And you just reflect on the number of submissions that residents made, the percentage of people that ask for things like urban design, notification, to be involved when things affected their properties, for special amenity areas to be retained and restored and enhanced, and that that was dismissed despite over 90% of the people that made submissions saying that that was something that they wanted in terms of the inner city. And it doesn't, it does seem to me that the council has a map of the central city which defines the community board delegated authority area, which includes the CBD and goes a little bit to the south to Morehouse. And it does seem to me that we should consider that actually that should be the central city for the regeneration, not the entire four abs, which disenfranchises a huge number of residents from normal democratic decision-making. I think those residents have been through four different planning exercises, a bit like my colleague councillor Ester made reference to New Brighton. And I think it's fair to say that the outcome of those planning processes has not reflected the majority desires of those communities. Therefore, I can see no good reason to keep them within this planning context. I think it's better that they actually, we think about a return to normal democracy. I think we also need to think about a few other aspects to this legislation. And I guess if you look at it in the broadest context, if it's around empowering us to be able to ask for the help we need to do things in the extraordinary circumstances that we're faced with, then that's a really good principle. So it's not about someone telling us what we have to do, it's actually about us being able to say, we need help and here's a way in which we think we can achieve it and can you work with us to actually find a solution to doing something. It's also about looking at things like public transport. We as a city should be in control of public transport. The fact that we have a competitive environment for a public transport in a post-earthquake environment is bizarre. And so we've got an opportunity through this legislation to do a lot more than just planning for physical built form, but actually planning for social services, planning for housing, planning for transport, all key things and services that make up a city and help the community. And I think there is an opportunity through this legislation, if we work with it, to actually get some of those things happening. I do also make the point that, you know, I've asked our staff to look at a bylaw for vacant properties or derelict properties, properties that have been, you know, left at the whim of projected insurance negotiations or for whatever reason haven't been up kept. And I think there is a kind of issue here that actually we do need to start saying to government that you have to, you have to have some legislative thought given to requirements on insurance companies to settle in a timely manner, to deal with people in good faith and not allow them to just have this open-ended process. And I guess council is a very good example of someone who, despite being nearly five years on from the disaster, we're still to resolve our insurance issues in any substantial way. So I think there's an opportunity through this legislation. I've got some concerns about some of the aspects to it. I think that's going to be addressed through the delegated authority to the other committee to address. I think we do need to get some clarity around what's happening with our district planning and I'm still not quite sure where things have got to with that. But it does seem to me the last thing we want to do is create another separate district planning process away from local decision-making. And the final point I'll make is that we can't forget about the ability to have actually certainty around what projects are going to be delivered by who and how they're going to be paid for. And the one reflection that I'll leave you with is that if we'd sorted out at the start of the process, who was responsible for making decisions on things like the central city projects and how they would be funded before they were announced, I think we'd see a lot more progress today rather than the situation we're in, which has come under recently a bit of criticism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's been a really good debate and I think it's been incredibly helpful to have people focusing on what is an incredibly important moment, I think, in the history of the city. I totally agree with the warning about looking to what's happened in the past in order to see the way ahead. The way that I had it described to me, I remember in the past, was you've got to keep your eye on the rear vision mirror in order to see your way clear on the road ahead. And I think that's about right for the frame. I think the fact that we are debating in public the submission that we're going to make on the bill, the fact that the mayor and the chief executive will front up to the select committee side by side, that didn't happen last time either, this is going to be, I think, quite a different occasion. It's an opportunity for us to really stretch ourselves and to say to central government that we're ready to take up a role that we weren't ready to take up five years ago. And the fact that we weren't ready five years ago, it's neither here nor there. We're ready now and we've said very clearly to central government, we can play an equal role, we can stand alongside you. And I loved it, I think Jamie was the one who said, they can, they can't, we can't do it without them, but they can't do it without us. And it's actually the collaboration between central government, the council, but also the city through its various communities, the business community, through the different communities that each one of you represents around this table and represents really well. So, and all of those issues about the different communities that are interested in the central city but are also interested in the areas where they live, that came through really loud and clear. A message that did come through for me, and it has been bothering me for a long time as well, is the fact that people can't really, they can't really move on with their own lives until their insurance is settled. Not all of the derelict buildings are a result of insurance companies either. There are obviously negotiations going on between different parties and, you know, I do think though that the points that both Yanni and Paul have raised about the need to get on top of the derelict buildings is really important because I think they send a really negative message about our city and its state of progress. And I think that there could be something and we will certainly raise that when we make the oral submission on the select committee. I'm thinking that perhaps a, an amendment on the face of the record in relation to the, in relation to the, to the insurance though for the residential area, I think probably would be incredibly helpful and helpfully, someone's drafted some words here along the lines of recognizing that, and I'll hand them over, recognizing that the lack of certainty regarding insurance outcomes remains a significant obstacle to regeneration for individuals and communities. The council asks the Crown to consider introducing a legislative mechanism that would require both public EQC and private insurers to reach agreed timeframes for settlement with all outstanding claimants and make available advocacy, technical support, and mediation services to enable this to occur. Informally, I have raised the idea of having a cutoff point for mediation to occur. That's not arbitration, it's not forcing people into final positions, but it's mediation and often mediation will enable people to see what the issues are. Some of the people I've spoken to over the years, they just need someone to tell them whether the deal's a fair deal or not. And they've just, the trust has broken down so much that they just can't trust what they're being told. They need someone independent, someone on their side to say, this is an okay deal or it's not an okay deal and here's why. So if we could add that to the submission, I mean, the feedback that I've had from insurance companies that I've spoken to on a very informal basis is that they would be interested in that approach. And I think that, I think everyone would like to bring this part of it to an end because it is stopping people from engaging in the next phase, the regeneration phase of the city. And if people were able to get that certainty and to have that resolution, even if they could have a timeline so that they would know when things were going to get done, then that would give people the ability to get excited about the next phase in the life of the city. And there is a next phase and I loved one of the councillors who said, this is, this symbolizes a new beginning. I can't remember whether it was Ellie or Pauline, but it was one of them.
Doesn't matter.
And it doesn't matter because I always get them confused anyway. But the point that I'm making is that it's a wonderful opportunity and we have to step up ourselves. It's not just a step change that's coming, you know, from someone else, it's us that has to step up and be part of that step change. I'm so excited about the opportunity that Regenerate Christchurch does give us. I personally do think that it could be a model for a new way of doing urban, urban planning, in the urban sense. It's not the idea that it engages communities in a meaningful exchange and that's to and fro. And I think that's what's been missing to a large extent is that sense of to and fro that certainly happened over Victoria Square. And I think that's been a hugely positive result. It's been a real win-win. It's been a win for the government in terms of the CCDU proposals that were initially going out. The engagement with the community has actually enabled a really good result. And I think that that is a really good model for how our city will develop from here on in. So, thank you very much for the input and I too would like to put on record my thanks to council staff who have made such a significant contribution and I know, put in such a large amount of effort into making this work. So, on that basis, with the addition of these words and mediation services to occur, right, full stop, right. Excellent, and we can tidy up the grammar afterwards. So I will put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It's carried. Thank you very much. Right. And on that note, I, oh, can I have a mover and a second for an apology from councillor Buck, which did come through in the end and I think it was just late coming through. Tim and Phil, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried and I will declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much. Those opposed say no, that's carried and I will declare the meeting closed, thank you very much.